So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 24th meeting of the East Fishville Zoning Board of Appeals. We'll start with a roll call. Norma Drummond.
Aziz Essen.
Brandon Rodas.
All right, thank you. Can I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Since we are likely on our last Zoom meeting, let me just read our, the, some comments here to set the stage. So, good evening and welcome to the East Fishville Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of May 24th, 2022. To the public health and safety concerns associated with the COVID-19 pandemic, the board is meeting via video conference using the Zoom platform in accordance with the governor's executive orders. There is no in-person public participation tonight, rather the public can watch the meeting, the live meeting to resume online or on cable. Notice that tonight's meeting was published as required and posted on the town's website. The web notice including the instructions for members of the public to access the meeting and participate in any public hearings. For each of the public hearing applications on this, the agenda this evening, public comments will be taken at the appropriate time after the board has asked any questions. Please note that tonight's meeting is being recorded and its transcript will be available at a later date. We start our meeting tonight with some administrative issues and need to issue a decision on a previously reviewed application. Then we will hold a number of public hearings, which will be on applications that the board has already reviewed and now wants to hear from the neighbors as we recognize you know these areas better than we do. I will introduce each agenda item, so everyone will know which item we are working on. Finally, we will get to the reviews, which are generally the first time we review applications or our applications where the applicants needed to get this board additional information. There will be no public comment on any of these reviews this evenings. Neighbors will be noticed on these applications at the appropriate time for some future meeting. If you wish to comment on an application that has a public hearing, when we get to that item on the agenda and I ask for public comment, please do the following, depending on whether you are on the phone or online. Members of the public attending online via the Zoom app may use the raise hand feature at the appropriate time if you would like to make a comment. The feature is located at the bottom of the screen. Those attending the video via telephone can press star nine. The meeting host will see that your hand is raised and that you have pressed our nine and will unmute those waiting one at a time, so that you can speak. In either case, please state your name when you are called upon to speak. In order to keep the meeting orderly and sure we get a clear recording, please follow these ground rules. One, when you are given access to speak, please, please state your name and address. It is helpful for the board members to know if you are a neighbor to an application. Two board members, I will call on you one at a time to speak to avoid everyone speaking at once. If you wish to speak at any time when I'm not calling on you, just use the raise hand function or literally just raise your hand on the screen, so I can see that. Brandon, you'll have to use the, the, the star nine feature, so that Michael will need to know if you're not, if you are muted at that time. Board members, please mute yourselves when you are not speaking. This is especially important if you're not the only one home in your house. And then four, we will use roll call voting for purposes of law board motions. This is to ensure that the record is clear. For there are some simpler votes that I can just ask for, like if we want to approve going to public hearing, those, for those, you can just raise your hand literally on and I'll see it on the screen or Brandon, you'll have to let me know that. Thank you in advance to everyone for your patience and bear with us as we conduct our meeting this way. So, just remember that we're, you know, we generally have papers in front of us and now we're dealing, looking at documents on the computer and paper. So, it could get, oh, you know, sometimes it just gets a little crazy on us, so just bear with us. Okay, so with that in mind, let me pull up the agenda, because that's the part of the problem of having the screen. Um, we do have, our upcoming meetings are going to be Tuesday, June 28th and then Tuesday, July 26th. We do have one set of meeting minutes to approve the minutes from April 26th, 2022. I believe there was literally one, one, at least I had one suggested amendment to it. So, is there a motion to approve the minutes from April 26th as amended?
So moved.
Brandon, are you able to second that?
Yep.
Okay, good, thank you. All in favor? I thank you, Aziz, Brandon. Okay, thank you, and myself, I. So, the, so the minutes as amended are carried. So, as we mentioned, the first item on our agenda is a decision. Appeal 4027, Daniel Kabibo, 191 Creekside Road Hopewell Junction, requesting an 11-foot sideline variance to allow our proposed 510-square-foot garage and a 28-foot rear line variance to allow our proposed 950-square-foot addition pursuant to the schedule of bulk, of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Brandon or Aziz, are either of you prepared to offer the resolution?
Yeah, I can offer the resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, this is, um, this was a decision we had closed and reserved. And so, it's appeal number 4027. Applicant is Daniel Kabibo, requesting a, one, 11-foot sideline variance from the schedule of bulk regulations to allow a proposed 510-square-foot garage and two, a 28-foot rail line variance from the schedule of bulk regulations to allow a proposed 950-square-foot addition. The variances. The resolution is offered by zoning board member Aziz Essen, whereas the applicant applied to the ZBF of variances in, in order to create additional living space in his home for his parents. And whereas in order to meet the requirements of the Duchess County Department of Health, DOH, or Septic Systems, the applicant has agreed to remove a bedroom. And whereas other houses in the neighborhood have two and three-car garages. And whereas with the applicant, what the applicant is intending to do is akin to the creation of an accessory apartment within his home. And whereas the applicant has discussed his plan to aesthetically improve his property to match the level of surrounding community. And whereas this is a type-two action under seeker. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on April 20th, 2022. And whereas the zoning board appeals had a public hearing on April 26th, 2022 and reserved its decision for, for, for the May 24th, 2022, 2022 meeting. And whereas the zoning or board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the orientation of the house and the need for the additional residential space to be located on the ground floor as the intended occupants are aged. The variance could be deemed substantial, but the applicant has proposed minimum, the minimal variances that would accomplish the desired results. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Daniel Kabibo for one, a 11-foot sideline variance from the schedule of bulk regulations to allow a proposed 510-square-foot garage and two, a 28-foot rail line variance from the schedule of bulk regulations to allow a proposed 950-square-foot addition, some, additional, addition subject to the following conditions. One, no new bedroom shall be added without approval from the Department of Health. And two, the application obtained approval for an accessory apartment from the building department. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Brandon, are you okay seconding that motion? Brandon, yeah, there you go.
Seconded.
Thank you. So, votes as follows. Aziz?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
And myself, I. So, the motion carries for Mr. Kabibo. If Mr. Kabibo, if you are online, at this point, you'll just deal with the building department. All right?
All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a great rest of the evening.
You too. Thank you. All right, now we start our public hearings. So, item number two is a public hearing. Appeal 4030, Kevin Chorlins, 380 Rushmore Road, Stormville, requesting a 38-foot front yard variance to allow our proposed 18-foot by 30-foot or 540-square-foot carport and a 44-foot front yard variance for a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance and the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, so. Oh, there's Ruben. Okay, so, we've met with Ruben twice now, I believe, going over and talking through issues on this application. The issue is that this is a house that does not have an existing garage. So, we do, you know, recognize that, that, you know, there's, everybody has a need to store things. And so, the applicant has requested an 18-foot by 30-foot carport, a typical garage, two-car garage would be 20 by, you know, 20 by 24, that kind of thing. So, um, so this, the 30 foot's just a little bit larger, but obviously, you know, there's potentially storage that you want to put in there as well. So, um, and then, you know, but because of the nature of this property, it's, it's steep to begin with and it's just, um, there's only, there's a very little area that the applicant has to work with to be able to put this carport in or any kind of garage in. And even putting this in, it's going to be a little bit of a distance to the house itself. We, there's, you know, Ruben Buck, the engineer, has showed us, he, he's given us multiple sketches to be able to show us that turning it around and putting it sideways, just while it could work, it's not, it doesn't allow the greatest turning radius for the owners of the house or for any future users to be able to make the best use of it. And then honestly, probably seeing the rear of a carport is probably better than seeing the open face of one anyway, because there will not be garages, garage doors on it to close it out. We talked about the fact that there are some chicken coops on the property within, but they were going, they were not being used for chickens and they were going to get moved into the, out, into an area that did no longer require variances. Ruben, do you know if that's been done?
I do not. No.
Okay. Um, but beyond that, I don't think there was anything, oh, did we talk about what the finish of this was going to look like? What it's, what color it's going to be?
It's going to be cedar siding.
Okay, so it's, and there is some amount of screening. We did talk about the fact that there is some amount of vegetation there, not full-blown. So, in the wintertime, it's, this carport will not be hidden. But at least during the summertime, there is, there is some vegetation existing there already that will not be removed by the applicant. And so, it will allow some amount of screening from the carport for anybody that happens to pass by. But this is, this is, by its nature, Rushmore Road is a pretty remote area of town. And so, you know, people, it's not a major road that people would be passing by to get to some other destination. So, again, given the nature of it, I think this should be okay. Um, questions or comments from board members?
I'm good.
Ruben, is there anything else you'd like to offer?
I appreciate you giving the summary. Did all the heavy lifting for me.
That's fine. That's, that's what I'm here for. All right, so is there anyone here, any member of the public here to speak for or against the application of Kevin Chorlins, 380 Rushmore Road, Stormville, requesting a 38-foot front yard variance to allow a proposed 18-foot by 30-foot or 540-square-foot carport and a 44-front yard variance, 44-foot front yard variance for a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling? We should mention, we should mention, by the way, that the dwelling itself was probably built in the, do we remember? 1950s or something, if I remember correctly? It was a while ago, so. Yeah, predate zoning, so that's, we're not going to make any, any applicant move a house for, that was built before zoning was put in place. So, go ahead, Michael.
So, if anybody's here and would like to speak on this matter, please hit the raise your hand function or hit star nine if you dialed in. I don't see any hands raised. Oh, I do see one, actually. I will allow this person to speak. Have you unmuted yourself? You have to hit star six.
There's a phone number beginning with the 31, 310 area code, so go ahead.
Hi, this is the homeowner at 380 Rushmore Road. My name is Kevin Chorlins. Um, thank you for unmuting me. I appreciate it. I just wanted to thank you for the support. Um, the other thing, so that, for the carport, yeah, the, the dwelling was built in 1800, not in 1950s. So, very much predates any zoning. Um, and we would plant some evergreens to block the view from the street. So, any concerns that you have on that, we will dislodge, um, you know, by making sure that the carport isn't visible to the street. And, um, if there's any other questions, I know we were also trying to get, um, the, a variance for a, a, a small cabana by the pool. Um, I don't know if that was on the, um, on the docket for tonight.
No, it's not. It's first I'm hearing about it.
Me too. Haven't heard of it.
Okay, so Ruben, we haven't been talking to them about the, the little cabana at all by the pool.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, okay, so I don't, um, okay, so I don't, I, how do, what would be the process of us being able to show you the, we have designs and everything for that as well? I mean, I mean, we can submit them and.
How big is this cabana?
Um, I don't have the exact dimensions right in front of me, so unfortunately, it's like four feet by 10 feet. Um, and it sits on, on the sort of north side of the, I'm sorry, south side of the pool.
Do you know?
There's no plumbing.
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Chorlins.
Yeah, it's just, uh, it, it just will require electric, no plumbing. It's just, uh, basically a sun shield that, at the edge of the pool.
Again, if, if it is within that footprint, I don't know if it needs variances. We are only dealing with the, any variances that you might be needing. But from looking at your map, I don't think you, you need any variances where the, a proposed pool is located.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't know, I could be wrong. Maybe somebody can correct me.
Well, well, the issue could be that he's already got an accessory structure with the chicken coop. So, this would be an additional accessory structure.
We'd have to go through the building department.
The chicken coop, by the way, was the chicken coop by the previous owner. It is not currently occupying any chickens. It's just a storage shed, essentially.
Okay, but again, so you have a, so you have a shed. Okay, let, let's, let's, Ruben, did you take a look at this, whether this whole cabana needs a variance or not? Because we didn't notice any neighbors on it.
This, this is the first I'm hearing of the pool cabana.
Okay, well.
In the end, it might not need a variance, so we'll, you know, if it needs a variance, then it would come back to this board. Otherwise, it would just be, um, an administrative review with the building department.
Okay, no problem. Maybe that's what it is. Let me take that away and I can get back to you, um, you know, with more detail. I think Ruben and I can take a look. It may not even need anything. But thank you for the support on the carport. I really appreciate it. But, yeah, unfortunately, like I said, the building was built in 1800, so there's clearly no garage or anything. Um, and this was our attempt at being able to park our cars something and somewhat inside. So, and, and you answer your question, there is a small bit of storage on the side, which is, um, makes up for that, you know, slight exercise versus a, just a freestanding two-car garage. So, appreciate it. And like I said, um, you know, the, the front edge of the road won't be affected. We'll be sure to plant evergreens and all of that. So, any concerns, um, that you might have about it showing, we'll make sure that it won't.
Sounds like a plan.
Great. Thank you all for your support.
Okay, is, are there any other, are there any members of the public, any neighbors that wish to speak for or against this application?
I don't see any other hands.
So, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aziz, you may have to read all of them today, I think.
Okay, I, I plan to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. Uh, this is appeal number 40, 4030. Applicant is Kevin Corlins, requesting, um, they're requesting a 38-foot front yard variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the town code for a proposed 18-foot by 30-foot carport and two, a 44-foot frontline, a front yard variance from the requirements of the schedule of bulk regulations for a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling, the variances. Um, resolution is offered by the zoning board member Aziz Essen, whereas the applicant purchased a pre-existing non-conforming property that was built significantly before the original zoning ordinance was approved in the town. And whereas the property is in an area of town with a ruler character and where the location of the carport was located to minimize the intrusion to the neighbors. And whereas the applicant's design professional created multiple designs for the proposed carport and selected the one deemed to be the safest for the applicant and the surrounding community, surrounding community. And whereas this is a type-two action under seeker. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on May 18th, 2022. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on May 24th, 2022. And whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as the carport will have some screening from the existing vegetation and the property will be in conformance to the ruler feel of the area. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the location of the existing house and driveway. The variances could be deemed substantial, but the applicant has demonstrated that proposed location is the only location that would accomplish the desired result. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Kevin Corlins for one, a 38-foot, uh, front yard variance from the requirement of Section 194-107 of the town code for a proposed 18-foot by 30-foot carport and two, a 44-foot front yard variance from the requirement of schedule of bulk regulations for a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling, the variances. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Thank you. Brandon, do you have second the motion?
Seconded.
Thank you. So, votes as follows. Aziz?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
And myself, I. So, Ruben, now you and the owner will deal with the building department. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
You as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, item number three, appeal 4032, John Tom. John Tom, 87 Stormville Road, Stormville is requesting a 23-foot sideline and a front yard variance to allow an existing 1,027-square-foot barn pursuant to Section 194-107 and the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
All right, so good evening. Um, last month, we had the opportunity to review the application for this barn. Apparently, the owners of the property are looking to subdivide the property. And to do so, they would need to create a flag lot, which where the pole of the flag lot would need to go, like literally immediately to the right of the barn. Um, it would be about two feet away from the barn and the barn would then end up being, well, it is in the front, would be in, in the front yard, because there's not a whole lot of room in front of it to be able to put a house. Right now, uh, I believe the barn is the only structure on the property. But there was a house under construction next door. I actually, I have to admit, I took the time to walk over there and go do a site visit. I wasn't expecting to, but a couple of weekends ago, I was out and just said, what the heck? And so, um, it was interesting to do that, because again, seeing the house under construction next door was good. Seeing the elevation difference, that the difference in the photography from where the barn is to where the driveway is going to be next door. I don't think anybody mentioned that it's like a six to eight-foot drop right there, um, from where the, where that driveway is going to be. So, um, it's going to be kind of like towering over the, the, the persons, you know, their, their lot there. Um, and there's all, there is, there's kind of like a road by user, driveway by user right there now. So, that's why it was easy to visualize exactly where you were talking about that property line going. But the other thing to note is that essentially diagonally across the street is a house that has a garage, like literally with, I wouldn't even, I'd be surprised if there was a whole full length of a car of, ready for somebody to be able to park right in front of it. So, it would not be out of character for this neighborhood to have a structure close to the road. In fact, this, this structure is significantly further back from the road than the one that is essentially diagonally across the street. So, uh, it was, uh, you know, the barn is definitely not in great condition. It looks pretty solid, but it definitely needed some loving care. And the applicant told us last time around that if the barn is staying, that they would invest in that barn and make sure that it looks well and it starts, it stands for a long time to come. You know, it had a great stone foundation, so it has a nice kind of rural look to it. Um, and probably would detract then from any lot or any house being built behind it. It would distract anybody on the street, because you, the nature of the street there. But it is beautiful, you know, bike, bike and toll road there is just beautiful in terms of all the homes and all the properties that are there. So, um, I do believe, you know, my personal opinion, I want to hear from the neighbors, but my personal opinion is, um, it would be nice to be able to keep an older barn, certainly on a property like this. So, um, but with that said, I want to open, any questions or comments from board members first?
I'm, I'm fine.
I'm good as well.
Okay, Michael, is there anything you, you would like to add to the discussion? Or what I just, what I just spoke about?
Michael G. or Michael C.?
Michael G.
Did one of your walks actually take you all the way over there?
I actually crossed the Deconic and then had to cross the Deconic and come back.
No.
It was early on a Saturday morning, so the traffic is not so bad on the Deconic Parkway and on a Saturday morning.
I see you out there. Um, yeah, no, I, I think you kind of stated it very, very straightforwardly and, and, you know, the intent was right to kind of keep an old barn to kind of fit with its setting out there, so.
Are there any other variances that this property or any of the lots are going to need to get for this subdivision to happen?
Uh, I don't believe so. I mean, we meet the flag lot requirements and there's a little bit of flood plain in the wayback, steep slopes would meet and so forth. So, I'm not anticipating anything else.
Because when I, in looking at the scale, when looking at the map or your plan with Michelle, it says scale as noted, but we didn't see a scale on there anywhere. So, it was hard for us to actually figure out what some of the measurements were.
Okay, yeah, um, uh, you know, I'll obviously check that out. I mean, but scale as noted, then we put something below it. So, typically, it's a, you know, a 40 or a 50 scale, I would think, for that, that size property.
Yeah, there was nothing, there was nothing there, so we could not actually tell what some of the measurements were. And so, I think Michelle was a little concerned about whether all the requirements were going to get met there, so.
Yeah, at least to my end on layout and design, this is the only variance that we're anticipating, so.
So, Michael, I think, uh, before you'll get any sort of decision in order on this, a vote on that, I think you'll need to, I'm just confirm that, um, you know, for the variances with Michelle and the engineering department.
Okay, uh, all right, so we know that we.
Scale that, that on our, and that whether it's our building department or engineering or Michelle checks, just to confirm, no other variances are needed.
Okay, I mean, we've been for the planning, but I don't remember anything coming up on her review letter specific to that, but I'll, we'll take a look at it, so.
My understanding is that the planning board punted to us, because if we weren't going to grant the variance, then they weren't going any further with it.
Right, right, right. Okay.
All right, so.
I mean, that's, we'll check it out. Like I said, based upon at least what we're bringing. Yeah, I mean, that's, we'll check it out. Like I said, based upon at least what we're being paid to do is the only variance that we see is the one for the, for the barn and the front. So.
Okay.
I'll provide assurance to them that that's the only one we're looking for.
All right. So is there any member of the public here to speak for or against the request from John Tom eighty-seven Stormville Road? Stormville requesting a twenty-three foot sideline and a front yard variance to allow an existing one thousand twenty-seven square foot barn pursuant to section one ninety-seven dash one oh seven and the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Go ahead, Michael. Michael C.
If you're here to speak, can you please hit the raise your hand function or if dialed in for this one, hit star nine? I don't see any hands.
I'm going to suggest that we close and reserve, right, Michael? We're comfortable closing for our business, but we just need Michael Gillespie to confirm that there are no other variances needed.
That's correct.
Okay. So do I have a motion to close and reserve this application?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, Michael. So as soon as, Michael Gillespie, as soon as you can confirm that with Jackie, all right, then we should be able to take this up at the next meeting.
Okay. Well, the plan too on our end was to submit for the planning board and the way it works now is the planning board meeting hits before the zoning board meeting in June. So, um, I guess I'll deal with Michelle as long as she can confirm my, um, conclusions.
That's what we're looking for. Okay. Cause any, any board member. Any, any planning board member can watch our meeting here to see that there were no neighbor abductions and there was.
Right, right, right.
Supportive of it. So.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. All right. Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right. Item number four, appeal four zero three three, Jamie Greenwald. Fifty Katie's Way, Hopewell Junction requesting a ten foot sideline variance to allow our proposed fourteen foot by twenty foot or two hundred and eighty square foot accessory structure pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? Let's not approve it just yet. Let's open it.
Oh, yeah. So moved.
Thank you, Brandon. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. So this one, hold on one second. I gotta get this one in my head. Too many documents over here. Okay. So this is one where the applicant is proposing a, we weren't sure whether we were calling it a storage shed or garage, but I think we were sticking with a storage structure. Okay? Um, but it is, uh, the applicant is proposing one that is fourteen feet high, which is um, why there was some concern on the building department's side, but, um, he is, the second floor is not going to be used for any kind of residential uh, use. It's just going to be simply for storage. Um, I think this is the one that they talked about his needing some space for Christmas and outdoor decorations, things of that sort. So, um, we reviewed where this is going to be. I'm not going to say the neighbor has a storage fund. It is a similar kind of situation on their property, but one where Mr. or, um, the Greenwalds didn't think that their neighbors were going to object to its proposed location. So, uh, is Jamie Greenwald, is there anything you wish to add to that summary?
I don't know. Said it better myself.
Okay, thank you. Um, any questions or comments from board members, Aziz or Brandon?
I'm good.
So is there anyone here to speak for or against the request from Jamie Greenwald, fifty Katie's Way, Hopewell Junction requesting a ten foot sideline variance to allow our proposed fourteen foot by twenty foot accessory structure?
Here to speak on this matter, please hit the raise your hand function or if you dial then hit star nine. I don't see any hands.
Do we have a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Brandon. All in favor? I.
Hi.
Hi.
Go ahead, Aziz.
Okay, this is, this is appeal number four zero three three. Applicant is Jamie Greenwald requesting a ten foot sideline variance from the requirements of section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the schedule of bulk regulation for a proposed fourteen foot by twenty foot two hundred and eighty square foot accessory structure. Uh, resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Assam, whereas applicant proposes to install a, an approximately fourteen foot high storage structure and where the applicant does not currently have a storage shed on the property. And where is applicant selected the location of the proposed storage structure to minimize the request for variance? And where is the siding of the structure and matches siding of the applicant's house? And where is this the type two action seeker? And where is the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on May eighteen twenty twenty-two? And where the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing um, on a public, uh, public hearing on May twenty-four twenty twenty-two. And where is the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout, layout of the property. The variance could be deemed substantial, but the applicant has proposed the minimum minimum variance that would accomplish the desired result. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Jamie Greenwald for a ten foot sideline variance for the, from the requirements of section one ninety-four dash one oh seven of the schedule of bulk regulations for a proposed fourteen feet by twenty feet, two hundred and eighty square foot accessory structure. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or the duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Brandon, do you second the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Votes as follows, Aziz.
Hi.
Brandon? And myself, I. So Mr. Greenwald, your, your motion carries. Um, now you'll just deal with the building department, please. Okay?
Great. Thank you so much. Have a nice evening.
You as well.
Thank you.
All right. Item number five, appeal four zero three four, Jesus Santos, four ninety-nine Shenandoah Road, Hopewell Junction requesting an eleven foot rear front yard variance to allow an existing twenty foot by thirty-three foot or six hundred and sixty square foot above ground pool, a fifteen foot front yard variance for the pool equipment and a seventeen foot. Oh, hold on. I'm looking at the, the older resolution. We, we changed this one second. I gotta go to the new resolution for this one. The new agenda. So, hold on. So, um, four ninety-nine Shenandoah Road, Hopewell Junction requesting an eleven foot front yard variance to allow an existing twenty foot by thirty-three foot or six hundred and sixty square foot above ground pool, a fifteen foot front yard variance for the pool equipment and a seventeen foot front yard variance for the six hundred and ninety square foot pool deck pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Brandon?
Oh, sorry. It's muted. Second.
Thank you. All in favor? I. The reason I got confused because I thought at the last meeting, Mr. Santos agreed to move the pool equipment to the rear of the pool. So we didn't need, we eliminated the need for that variance. So, but Mr. Santos is here. So let me, um, so a quick summary, we, we did have an opportunity to discuss this application with you last month. The issue came that, um, you were trying to put in the pool, you contacted the building department about getting a permit, but because of COVID, you were not able to get a response or get through to the building department for whatever reason. Um, and so you went ahead and put the pool in anyway. Uh, given thus, nature of your lot, which is pretty sloped, pretty deeply behind your property, you actually had to dig out an area to put the above ground pool into so it could, you know, obviously lie flat, um, which kind of kind of hides it from view to some extent, but we did talk about the fact that the Baptist church next door and from the street that it does need some screening. And so we talked about you offering, put up a fence and it probably gets, if you're gonna have a long length of fence, you're probably gonna need some landscaping to just kind of break up the, the whiteness or the, the visibility of a long fence. Um, but that, and we did talk about that you move, you know, proposing to move the pool equipment, but at this point, um, since it went out with it, you know, and you're put in, you're agreeing to put up a fence, I'm not sure that moving the pool equipment and going to that expense, I'd rather see you use that money and put up, put some additional landscaping in as opposed to, um, you know, moving the, the pool equipment since it would be hidden anyway. So are there any other comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I'm good as well.
Okay. Mr. Santos, anything else you wish to add? You're muted.
Okay.
We can hear you.
Yeah, everything is good. Thank you so much.
Okay. So would you like to leave the pool equipment where it is and then you'll just put a little bit, you'll, you'll put some landscaping to break up the fence?
To break up the fence? Um, I don't understand what you're trying to say.
So, so in essence, what you talked about was putting a, a fence up in the front of your yard, but a long expansive fence can be, you know, kind of ugly.
Right.
So if they, if you could put, if you could put some clumps of landscaping in the front of that fence to just break up the fence, the, the look of the fence a little bit, that would be very helpful.
All right. Will do.
Okay. So any other, so board members are good. So let's just see if anybody, is there any member of the public who wishes to speak for or against the request from Jesus Santos, four ninety-nine Shenandoah Road, Hopewell Junction requesting an eleven foot front yard variance to allow an existing twenty foot by thirty-three foot above ground pool, a fifteen foot front yard variance for the pool equipment and a seventeen foot front yard variance for a six hundred and ninety square foot pool deck?
If you'd like to speak on this matter, please hit the raise your hand function or if you, or star nine if you dial then.
We probably should have said that this is somewhat of a business area, commercial area as opposed to being a real residential. And in fact, the town board had to take action to allow this structure to be used as a residence. Um, so there's not a whole lot of neighbors in this area. That's, I think, one of the reasons that we were, you know, less concerned about setting any kind of precedent here because there's very, very few neighbors, residential neighbors in this area. All right. So seeing no speakers, um, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Brandon. All in favor? I.
Hi. Uh, this is appeal number, this is appeal number four zero three four. Applicant is, is Jesus Santos requesting a one A eleven foot side front yard variance from the requirements of section one ninety-four dash ninety-five of the town code and the schedule of bulk regulations for an existing twenty foot by thirty-three foot uh, six hundred and sixty, six, six and six hundred and sixty square foot above ground pool and to a front, a fifteen foot frontline, front yard variance from the requirements of the schedule of bulk regulations for the pool equipment and to a seventeen feet front yard variance from the requirements of section one ninety-four dash ninety-four of the town code and the schedule of bulk relations for a six hundred and ninety square foot pool deck, the variances. Resolution offered, offered by zoning board member Aziz Assam, whereas applicant installing pool at the beginning of COVID nineteen pandemic without obtaining the necessary approvals. And whereas applicant has posited that he intends to obtain all necessary approvals, but there were difficult, but there were difficulties related to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas applicant agreed to screen his pool by adding a fence and whereas the applicant's property is a residence in a B one zone and whereas the applicant is able to have a pool in a business zone after amendments to the schedule of bulk regulations that included the following text, private swimming pools and tennis courts as an accessory used shall meet the bulk regulations of a F of an R one zone for any dwelling located in a B zone and whereas this is the type two action seeker. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on May eighteen twenty twenty-two. And where is the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on May twenty-four twenty twenty-two? And where is the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the fence screens, screening that the applicant has agreed to install will provide aesthetic enhancements to the property. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the location of the existing house and the steep topography of the property. The variances could be deemed substantial. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Jesus Santos for one and eleven foot front yard variance from the requirements of section one ninety-four dash ninety-five of the town code and the schedule of bulk regulations for an existing twenty feet by thirty-three feet, six hundred and sixty square foot above ground pool and to a fifteen foot front yard variance from the requirements of the schedule of bulk regulations for the pool equipment and three, a seventeen foot front yard variance from the requirements of section one ninety-four dash ninety-four of the town code and the schedule of bulk regulations for a six hundred and ninety square pool deck subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall install fence to screen the pool and two, planting shall be placed in front of the portion of the fence to minimize the visual impact of the fence. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Brandon, do you second the motion?
Seconded.
Thank you. Uh, votes as follows, Aziz.
Hi.
Brandon?
Hi.
And myself, I. So Mr. Santos, your motion carries. You just deal with the building department at this point.
All right. Great. Thank you so much.
You're, you're welcome. Have a good evening.
Yeah.
All right. Item number six, appeal four zero three six. Karen Lecane, ten thirty-one Route three seventy-six, Wappingers Falls requesting a one hundred to ten foot frontline, a one hundred and twenty-three foot left sideline, a forty-six foot right sideline and a one hundred and twenty-two rear line variance to run a kennel out of the existing buildings pursuant to section one ninety-four dash fifty-five point one of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
I. So Karen is proposing to run, I saw, the sign is now up because I drove by it today, Mutt's. I think it's called Mutt's Mansions, um, out of the old Small World daycare center uh, on three seventy-six, really right by the town line uh, in opposite Stringham's property over there, the little industrial park. So the area, it's Sprout Creek. The industrial park is right there. The area is really an industrial area. So there's not neighbors for, except for the two across the street residences, there's not really neighbors in this area for a kennel to be disturbing anybody. Um, so then, so the nature of the doggy daycare that, that she's looking to put here. Um, and we just figured it made sense to just have, allow for the kennel or get the approvals for the kennel. So at some point, if, when her, when and if her business does well, she's can provide that as a service. Um, but she's looking to just work with the existing structures that are there. Um, Karen, if you can just speak to how many animals you would have in the daycare and in a kennel at any point, I think that would just be helpful to get that on the record. Do we have Karen joining us?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, good.
Okay. So for doggy daycare during the day, we're hoping to have, I would love to have up to thirty dogs. And then for boarding, I would say probably maybe ten to fifteen.
Okay, even if you had the thirty, there's two buildings there. So you're not talking about thirty in any one building, right? You'd be breaking them up. No, thirty dogs would not be outside at, at the same time, right? You're, you're. You're, you'd be splitting them up into groups.
That's correct. One building is going to be, um, you know, used. The bigger building is gonna be the doggy daycare. And we wouldn't have all the dogs outside at the same time. There are three separate yards out there. So, and we would have like the small dogs in one area. We would have indoor and outdoor runs.
Okay, thank you. Um, and again, the nature of this property, there's plenty of parking there for, you know, people to be able to stop in there, drop their dog off and then take off without, you know, causing any issue with parking on the, on the property there. So comments or questions?
Twenty-one spots.
There's how many spots?
I think there's twenty-one parking spots.
Okay, yeah, that's. Comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, so is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against the request from Karen Lecane, ten thirty-one Route three seventy-six, Wappingers Falls, requesting a one hundred and ten foot front line, one hundred and three, twenty-three foot left sideline, forty-six foot right sideline and a one hundred and twenty-two rear line variance to run a kennel out of the existing buildings?
Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak on this matter. I don't see any hands.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Brandon, can you second?
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor to close the public hearing? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh, this is the appeal number four zero three six. Applicant is Karen Lecane requesting a hundred and ten foot frontline variance and one hundred and twenty-three foot left sideline variance, a forty-six feet right sideline variance and a hundred and twenty-two feet rear line variance from the schedule of bulk regulations in section one ninety-four dash fifty-five point one of the town code to run a kennel out of the existing building, the variances. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Assam, whereas the property is located in the industrial area of the town with minimum, with minimal neighbors and whereas the applicant intends to do, intends for the business to include multiple services such as grooming and kenneling. And whereas the property has been empty since a daycare vacated the property. And whereas the applicant has agreed to his defense to six feet in height. And whereas this is a type two action seeker. And whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on May eighteen twenty twenty-two. And where the zoning board of appeals had a public hearing on May twenty-fourth twenty twenty-two. And whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an, an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will be in conformance with the industrial nature of the area. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the location of the existing building. The variances could, could be deemed substantial, but the applicant has not proposed an expansion to the existing building. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Karen Lecane for a hundred and ten foot side, a frontline variance and a hundred and twenty-three feet left sideline variance and a forty-six feet right sideline variance and a hundred and twenty-two feet rear line variance from the schedule of bulk regulations and section one ninety-four dash fifty-five point one of the town code to run a kennel out of the existing building, the variances subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall obtain site plan approval from the planning, planning board. Two, compliance with all other requirements of section one ninety-four dash fifty-five point one of the town code that the applicant did not receive a variance for. Three, sound absorbing material shall be installed within the building and around the perimeter of the, of any outdoor runways and exercise fence. For, for an escrow of one thousand five hundred shall be held by the building department for one year from the date of certificate, certificate of occupancy to be used to hire an acoustical engineer or qualified noise expert should there be any discernible noise emanating, emanating from the property or other complaints. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Brandon, are you okay seconding that?
Seconded.
All right, so votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries. You're all set. You just deal with the building department now, please.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
You too. Thanks a lot. Bye-bye.
All right, item number seven, and I should have said at the beginning of the meeting, by the way, that there is no item number eight today. Number eight has requested that they be on for the June meeting. So we'll go to seven and then go to number nine. But this is our last public hearing of the evening. Appeal four zero three seven, William Hardy, sixty-eight Brothers Road, Stormville is requesting a thirty thirteen, sorry, thirteen foot sideline variance to allow an existing ten foot by twenty-two or two hundred and twenty square foot storage shed pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to pu, open the public hearing?
So moved.
Yeah.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Hardy, if you can identify yourselves, then we can make sure you're included in here.
You're the applicant for this matter. Can you please raise your hand? We, we have someone.
Okay. All right, so, um, so we did see this application last month. This is a shed that Mr. Hardy acknowledged that he put up, that he installed probably back in like nineteen ninety-nine. So it's been there for over twenty years. He actually submitted a letter, which I'll read into the record in a, in a minute, from the neighbors who are in support of keeping it there. Um, there, the, the property is on a somewhat of a steep slope. Uh, this is the flattest area. There is a bit of a drainage issue in the backyard. And so, you know, the applicant really acknowledged that this was the best part of the site of his backyard to be able to keep the shed there. It will not have a second floor. So there's no, not gonna be any, you know, no, no additional use of it beyond being, you know, beyond being used for storage. Um, comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I'm good as well.
All right, um, there's the, on the screen it says Lori, but Mr. Hardy, is there anything else you wish to add about the summary for your application?
No, um, not, nothing to add. That's my, I'm using my wife's computer tonight.
That's fine, no problem. We all, we all have to do what we gotta do, so. All right, so let me read into the record the one applicant, the one letter that you did provide from your neighbor, um, dated April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. My name is Glenn H. Buckout. My wife and I reside at sixty-two Brothers Road, Stormville. We have no problem with the location of the shed at the Hardy residence near our property line. If you require additional information, please feel free to call, call number, and it is signed Glenn Buckout and Kathleen Buckout. So, thank you for providing a neighbor letter that, that definitely helps. If there are any other neighbors who wish to speak regarding this application, now would be the time. So we have an application from William Hardy, sixty-eight Brothers Road, Stormville, requesting a thirteen foot sideline variance to allow an existing ten foot by twenty-two foot storage shed. So if you wish to participate, Michael's gonna tell you how to do that.
Uh, please hit the raise your hand function.
I never remember what to say.
I don't have anyone.
All right, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yep. Hold on, you're not done yet. Hold on. Go ahead, Aziz.
Oh, yes.
Okay, um, this is appeal number four zero three seven. Applicant is William Hardy requesting a thirty feet sideline variance from the requirement of section one ninety-four dash one oh seven and the schedule of bulk regulations to allow an existing ten feet by twenty-two feet, two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty square foot storage shed. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Assam, whereas the applicant installed a storage shed in nineteen ninety-nine. And whereas applicant select the location of the storage shed to minimize the impact to his neighbors. And whereas this is the type two action seeker. And whereas the legal notice was published in this Southern Duchess News on May eighteen twenty twenty-two. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on May twenty-fourth twenty twenty-two. And whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the shed has been there for over twenty years and the property will remain residential in nature. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the property. The variance could be, could be deemed substantial, but the applicant has proposed the minimal, the minimal variances which would accomplish a desired result. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by William Hardy for a thirteen foot sideline variance from the requirement of section one ninety-four dash one oh seven and the schedule of bulk regulations to allow an existing ten feet by twenty-two feet, two hundred and twenty square foot storage shed. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or the duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed, filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Brandon, do you second the resolution?
Seconded, yep.
Thank you. So votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your, your motion carries. You're all set. Uh, Mr. Hardy, now you just deal with the building department.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, as I said a little while ago, there is no item number eight. They requested to be pulled and put on the, um, June agenda. So our last item of the evening, no, this is not a public hearing. This is just a review. At the appropriate time, we will notice the neighbors and invite them to participate in any public hearing if they wish to offer comments. So item number nine is appeal four zero three eight, Alberto Parator. One oh nine Broadway, Hopewell Junction is requesting a variance to allow a proposed generator to be located in the front yard pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. So this is another property in the Loma, Loma neighborhood. Um, and for my fellow board members, this is one where the applicant did everything they were supposed to do. The building department actually issued the permit and then when they went to do the final inspection, realized that it might not meet the requirements. So, um, the applicant, this, you know, it's by no means is it the applicant's fault. Uh, and then just in support of their application, we're, this is, um, you know, uh, they indicate that there it's a retired senior living there. So, uh, anytime power outage has happened, it's more difficult on some people. If anybody with any kind of medical issues, I know when my kids were small and they had asthma and the power went out, we had to find a hot firehouse every once in a while to, so emergency generators are, are really critical for some people with some medical and, uh, issues. The, the site that, where they're proposing to put this, um, sits about four hundred feet off from the road. Uh, and so, you know, it's really not gonna be visible to, beyond them, to themselves, so. But I will let the paratours explain if there's anything else they think we should be aware of for this application. So it says Mary, but I don't know if this is Mary or Alberto. Both. Oh, okay. Is, is there anything else you wish to offer for your application?
No, you pretty much said it all. Thank you.
Okay, just trying to make it easy for you.
Thank you.
All right, comments or questions from board members?
Motion to advertise.
Thank you. Um, Brandon, you second the motion?
Seconded.
Okay, um, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so Mr. and Mrs. Parator, what will happen is you'll need to call Jackie and stop them and get a sign for your property just so your neighbors will know there's a public hearing next month. And then you'll come back next month for that public hearing. Uh, and then we'll issue a decision at that point.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You're very welcome. Have a good evening. You as well.
You too.
All right, Aziz, go ahead.
Motion to adjourn.
Brandon? Come on, second the motion. I'll second the motion. All in favor of a journey? Aye, thank you, everyone.